I'd like to call the January 18th, 2012 Board of Education meeting to order. First, we'll have an invocation, and let's have a moment of silence while keeping in mind all those people who have allowed us to live safe and free. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This month, the school spotlight is on Knott's Island Elementary School.
Good evening, Dr. Dobney, board members, Ms. Schuler. Research has shown that there is a positive relationship between being physically active and academic achievement. At Knott's Island School, we are very fortunate that all of our students have or involved in physical education classes on a daily basis. Anytime you walk into our school gym, you can see students who are fully engaged in a wide variety of structured activities. No two days are the same in there. The PEP grant has had a big impact on our school. We have received so much equipment and technology that's gone along with it. I've told our PE teacher I'm gonna have to build him another room just for all the stuff that he's gotten over the grant. It's been just tremendous, and just seeing kids who are actively engaged, we're seeing a lot of kids who spark their interest, they're motivated, they're just being fully engaged in what's going on with this grant, and hopefully they're, they could also encourage him to make some healthy lifestyle decisions. Tonight, we want to look at our PE program and what we've done over the past year, and tonight I brought along my specialist, Mr. Jim Rider, PE teacher, and he's gonna share some information with us.
I'd like to thank you guys for letting me present tonight. Start off with, I'd just like to say that, you know, being a PE teacher, it's probably the best job in the world. Not only do you see the kids develop physically, but you see them develop socially, as well as mentally, learning games and procedures and different activities. Today, more than ever, the importance of a sound health and physical education program is crucial, not only at the elementary, middle, but also at the high school levels. Focus should be on developing the mental, physical, and social domains, all three should be interlinked. Balance and development of these three domains facilitate the achievement and wellness among all of our students. Wellness is defined as a quality or state of being of good health mentally as well as physically, and teaching the lifestyle that promotes wellness is our primary goal when teaching our healthful living curriculum. As far as my philosophy, interaction to me is the key. All children benefit from participating in activities with other students. This is where the building blocks in all three domains are touched, you know, the social, the physical, and the mental. It is in physical education where a child moves through a progression of basic skills, and a cast, you know, whether or not a cast of an athlete is developed is really not the importance, but the lessons that are learned through cooperation and effort are always gonna be the keys that's gonna unlock doors in the future. Focal points of my program would include fitness, skill development, and also the social end of it. I'm not big on competition, it's gonna come out with some naturally. Long lines are for the birds, and always, you know, special consideration is always given to certain groups, you know, you wanna make sure you group the kids accordingly. That way, they can succeed in the activities that they are participating in. I couldn't bring all the kids that I wanted to over, you know, being so far away, but we did bring a video tonight that we'd like to share with you guys and give you a smorgasbord, if you will, of some different things that we do in the physical education program.[275.72] That just gives you an idea of some of the things that we share and do over at Knott's Island in physical education class. You know, there's a lot of studies and a lot of talk about IQ. Another term that I use is EQ, and EQ is emotional intelligence. A quality physical education program highlights these things, things such as self-awareness, recognizing their emotions, self-regulation, controlling their emotions when things don't go their way, and understanding how to deal with those emotions, motivation, whether they're introverted or extroverted, and always trying to, you know, promote a positive attitude amongst all the children, empathy, and that's a pretty deep concept for an elementary student, recognizing other people's feelings and kinda seeing things, if the shoe was on the other foot, if you will. And then, like I said before, social skills is big. They're up out of their seats, they're moving, they're problem-solving, they're working together. This is a great conducive environment for those things to happen. And personally, one of the most important classes, if not the most important class of the day. I'd also like to touch a little bit on energizers. Energizers are eight to 10-minute activities that are done in the classroom. We're fortunate to have health and PE classes every day. However, a lot of schools don't due to the sheer numbers of kids to the ratio of PE teachers. Energizers are activities that classroom teachers can use to help break the monotony during the day. At our school, even though they do have PE every day, sometimes the kids are a little lethargic, maybe when they're going over a certain lesson, or maybe after lunch, or something of that nature. And an eight to 10-minute brain break, or some kind of activity just to kinda get them going and redirect them for a little bit, can, you know, what it does is it releases glucose or sugar into the brain, which activates and wakes the brain up, and this helps the kids prepare to learn some more, kinda like get them ready to reabsorb some more information, if you will. Just wanted to share with you some things that maybe you don't know about health and PE, just to let you know how important it is, and I appreciate your time. Let me present this evening.
Thank you. It's great to see children having fun while they're participating in physical activity. It's a lot different than when I was in school and they used to roll a basketball out and that was it. Thanks again. Okay, next, we'll have the public comments session. We asked the people limit their time to three minutes first on the list. Our superintendent, Allison Schuler.
Good evening, board members. I would like to let you know that January 2012 has been proclaimed School Board Appreciation Month by the governor of North Carolina, Beverly, Purdue. And so, we would like to honor you tonight and thank you for everything you do as board members and student board members. Your jobs are very important, and I'm sure you don't hear "thank you" nearly enough, so thank you. And the words in the proclamation really say it all, so I'm just gonna read the governor's proclamation. Whereas the state of North Carolina is committed to providing the best education possible for all of its students, and local school boards are critical to that process. And whereas North Carolina school boards supervise all matters related to public education in their school system and work to implement the Basic Education Program in accordance with rules adopted by the State Board of Education. And whereas school boards work with parents, education professionals, and members of the community to address the needs of the district and create an educational vision. And whereas school board members act as advocates for public education and serve as a link between the school district and the public. And whereas decisions made by local school boards help prepare students in K-12 public schools to leave the classroom career or college-ready. And whereas the state of North Carolina recognizes the contributions of local school boards to the academic success of public school students and entire communities. Now, therefore, Governor Beverly Eves-Purdue, Governor of the state of North Carolina, proclaims January 2012 as School Board Appreciation Month in North Carolina. And we want to especially thank you here in Currituck County for all that you do. If you would, please come forward for just a little recognition. We would like to recognize Dr. Bill Dobney, our school board chair. Thank you, Dr. Dobney.
Thank you.
Mr. Jackie Simmons, our vice chair. School board member Amy Ennis. Mr. John Barnes. Mrs. Karen Etheridge. And very important, our student school board members, Chelsea Heflin. And Mr. Jonathan Jackson. And can we give them a round of applause and appreciation? Thank you.
I know I speak for the rest of the board when I say that we all try to do our best for the children here in Currituck County. Okay, next, for the public comments session is Nancy Lurf, Currituck County NCAE president.
Good evening, Dr. Dobney, board members, and Ms. Schuler. I'd like to invite all of you to, next Thursday at 4:15 at our Shawboro Elementary School gym, we'll be having our government relations specialist, Ryan Lewis, coming in from NCAE in Raleigh, to speak with us on the legislative update. And I know part of our legislature, I shouldn't say all of it, is not always with us in public education, and I think this would be a wonderful opportunity for all of our staff. We're gonna open it to everyone, not just members, but to come and get the latest update on what our legislature is doing in the General Assembly and what we can do as teachers and members of North Carolina and voters, this being an election year, this would be a very important meeting. So we hope you can all attend 4:15 Thursday, and it'll be about an hour because the basketball players come in, I think, at 5:30. So, Dr. Dobney, wanna get that basketball that you learned in PE, you can help 'em out.
Well, that's much easier than what I thought you were going to ask us, because I was at Shawboro Elementary earlier today and I walked into Nancy's classroom and she was doing a talent contest. I thought she was gonna ask us to participate in it.
Right, I'll invite you all to the talent show also, January 27th at 6:00 PM. And our Shawboro stars will certainly come out that night. It's wonderful, so come to that also.
Thank you. Next, William Etheridge.
Good evening. Thank y'all for allowing me to, this opportunity to speak. William Etheridge, I'm also a president of the NAACP, but I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen. And recently, I just found out about this special event insurance that the people have to pay in the county just to use the schools. And it kinda surprised me, but they said it's been in effect since the beginning of the year, I believe. But I have a problem with it because I talked to the assistant superintendent, she told me who to call, what insurance company they to call, and I called them and it's $340 and $350. They tell me that's reasonable, but I can't see it being reasonable for one night, for three hours. That's not a reasonable price for nobody. And people that wants to do, like Relay for Life, and they wanna put on a program, $350? If they don't raise with $200, they $150 in the hole. Yeah, I mean, it just don't seem right to me. I know a lot of people, being that we have the YMCA now, a lot of people think that, okay, people can use the Y. Everybody can't afford the Y. Way the economy is now, everybody can't afford the Y. And I feel like, been here, I've been here all my life except for my four years in the Marine Corps, and I feel like these schools was built for the people in the community to help the people in the community because we don't have anything else in the community that people can use, community buildings and stuff, like everything you get, you have to pay for. Everything you use, you have to pay for. And I feel like we've been paying taxes all these many years to build these schools, and now, I understand, I have to take out insurance on my car, I have to take out insurance on my house, but I don't feel like I have to take out insurance just to use my own schools. I feel like that is something that can be done. There is some type of resolution that I feel that the school board actually looked into that they could solve this problem if they had to charge people more money to use the school, but not $350 to use the school. I think, you know, you gotta understand, we wanted to put y'all in these chairs, and if people not satisfied, they'll take you out of the chairs. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, we'll take that under consideration. Let me ask you this, William, was there any specific event that you were referring to?
We usually use it for the Martin Luther King Day program. And when I went to use it, the secretary told me I have to get a special event insurance, so I went home and called the assistant superintendent, and she told me $350. She said, "Call the insurance company." I called two insurance companies, one said, "We have a reasonable price of $340." Then I called the other one, reasonable price of $350. I don't think that's reasonable.
Have you used it in the past, William?
We have been using it for years.
You have? Okay.
Everybody, we've been using it for years. I mean, it's a program that we put on to try to help the people. It's not nothing that we out there trying to sell tickets or nothing like that for any program. We're just putting on a Martin Luther King Day program, we put on a program, all the churches get involved. And I did wanna say this, when things like this happen, I know you're the school board, but you can't contact everybody, but you can contact your churches. And the people that don't go to church, that's, I don't know. But if you contact the churches, I'm quite sure that information would get out there, just like this insurance thing. If it had been put out to the schools, I mean, to the churches, I think we would've known about it, instead of this surprise thing.
The $350 fee was for a liability?
For the insurance, yes.
For the insurance liability only?
Yeah. And I asked them, was that a one-time deal, or this is when I wanna use it at all time? They said it's only a one-time deal. $350, that's, that's over half of what I pay for my cars. I have three vehicles.
Yeah, we'll check into some things.
That's first, we've heard about it also, on the insurance.
Because y'all get to use it free.
We'll definitely take that under consideration. Okay, next, I need to amend the agenda to delete budget transfers and amendments, and we'll have Januaries at the February's meeting also. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, globally competitive students, overnight field trip request, Ms. Schuler?
Yes, for your review, there are a couple of overnight field trip requests. Currituck County High School's Regional Swim Meets in Golsborough, February 3rd and 4th, the Beta Club State Convention, that's also the high school. They can have early college, they're attending the Beta Club State Convention in Greensboro as well, and FCC LA from the High School State Leadership Conference is in Greensboro.
Okay, and I had, you had a check, and there is a male chaperone for the Beta Club State Convention from the high school. Okay, do I have a motion that we approve?
So moved.
Have a motion, second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, do we approve the overnight field trip request? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, student school board member reports, Chelsea.
At CCHS, this past Thursday, Herff gents came to speak with seniors about ordering cap and gowns, as well as graduation announcements and other packages, and they will return on Friday, January 27th, to take orders. Exams are well underway for this week, with regular testing ending Friday, the 20th. There is a new Tar Heel Junior Historians informational meeting on Friday, January 27th, in the media center during all lunches. The band awards ceremony is January 26th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, and there will be financial aid presentations for seniors on January 31st during all bells throughout the day. At JP NAP, first semester testing results came in at 100% proficient in Algebra I, as well as 100% proficient in Biology. Second semester has already begun for them, and 126 students are enrolled in college courses, with a total of 384 college classes being taken by their students. And JP NAP is also beginning to recruit their rising freshmen. Meetings have been scheduled for both middle schools to meet with students, as well as parents, and eighth grade students. If you have any questions, you should contact your guidance counselors.
Thank you, Chelsea. Jonathan?
Just to reinforce what Ms. Schuler said about the field trip request, the Beta Clubs in our county will be attending the one, the state convention on February 3rd, and also our science Olympia teams are gonna be attending the regional competition on January 28th in Greenville, North Carolina.
Thank you. Next, consent agenda, do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a second?
Sorry, second.
Have a motion, a second, do we approve the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, information items. Our next work session will be February 8th, 2012, at 4:00. And people need to note that it is a change from our regularly scheduled February 13th meeting, and our next board meeting will also be February 8th at 7:00 here. Okay, next item, board member comments. Let's see, we'll start with Karen.
I would just like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and I hope you've made some New Year's resolutions, some positive changes, and we're looking forward to 2012 and working with the public and the community, and I'd just like to wish everyone a Happy New Year.
Jackie?
I'd just like to tell everybody, I've had a chance to see the high school basketball team, Moyoc Middle School basketball team, Currituck Middle School basketball team. It was just really nice to get out and see all of our kids in their winter athletics. I'd like to say thank you to the pep band. If you haven't had a chance to go and watch one of our high school games, we now have a pep band that's playing at all the games. It's brought back a little bit of excitement, the kids love it, the fans love it, and just need to stop by and see one.
Great. Amy?
I was just gonna go along the same lines as Karen, I wish everyone a Happy New Year. I got in trouble for saying, talking about resolutions, you're not supposed to set resolutions anymore, you're supposed to set goals, because you can achieve your goals.
That's right.
So I hope everyone has set positive goals for 2012.
John?
Yeah, I wish everybody best of luck on the midterm exams. Thank everyone for what they, all the things they do for our school. You know, I know the exam is important for the early college and the middle, and the high school, but anyway, the best of luck, keep your fingers crossed that everybody passes.
And I had the privilege of touring Shawboro Elementary today, and also Moyoc Middle School today, and the people in the county ought to be very proud of the education that their children are receiving in those two schools. And over the rest of the year, I'm gonna plan on touring the other schools too, and I'm sure they provide an outstanding education. I have to tell this story about Shawboro Elementary. Today, Terry Godfrey was showing me around Shawboro Elementary, and she pointed out one classroom, and she said, "Now, we're really fortunate to have this teacher," because she drives all the way from Knott's Island every day. And I thought, okay, there's no children in the room, knocked on the door, opened the door, and said, "Understand you drive from Knott's Island every day." And she goes, "Yes, I do." And I said, "Well, years ago, when I started teaching here, I drove from this side to Knott's Island every day." And she looked at me and she goes, "I know you were my teacher." I don't, Ms. Godfrey's probably still laughing. And with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Do I have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. See you all on the 8th.